Okay, there you go. Councilmember Ashford.
President.
Councilmember Lamb. Councilmember Mojerak.
Here.
Councilmember Pemberton.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. Did we get the answer from Councilmember Lamb?
Here.
Okay, thank you. I just, first of all, welcome to everybody. This is our first time doing a meeting Zoom, so I hope everybody will be patient with us. It was decided upon that we could have more in attendance tonight, and we're inviting people to come to the meeting tonight in order to look at the different candidates and to hear them, and so we were kind of getting over our limit of what we should have in a public meeting. So, we did decide that tonight we should start using Zoom until such time as, obviously, we can all get back together a little bit more than we have been. We will be using Zoom for all future council meetings through the time that has been specified. At this time, I believe it's March 31st is what the order is in effect. Of course, that's subject to change, as we all know. So, we will be having our Zoom meetings at least through March at this point for council from this point forward. So now, before we get to the candidates, I would like to have public comment. So if there's anybody who is either on this by their computer or by their smartphone, they're welcome to do public comments. You do have to give us your name and your address. You have up to four minutes. And if you want to comment, if you would please raise your hand. There's the icon that's at the bottom of your screen, and then unmute yourself, but please be patient, as there might be a three to five second delay before our facilitator actually lets you in. So, if you need to make a public comment, please raise your hand. Or if you're on a telephone call, what you need to do is press star nine, and then you press star six to unmute yourself. So we will wait a second and see if anybody comes forward. I understand I have someone who has been allowed in, Shane Hernandez. And if that's correct, then if you could please give us his name, address, and you've got four minutes.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name's Shane Hernandez, resident at 1423 18th Street, and I just want to speak very briefly today on behalf of Patrick Patterson, who is one of the names running to fill the council position. I sent you a letter, so I just want to make three quick points. I met Patrick approximately four years ago right now, right after I became a state representative, and he approached me on the issue of recovery in the city of Port Huron. In that four years' time, Patrick has proven to be a leader and an innovator on an issue that is incredibly important to our city, and somebody who I think could bring a great perspective to this council. Not only has he shown to be a leader on that issue, I think Patrick has shown through his community involvement, his dedication to the city of Port Huron as a whole. I see him everywhere I go. He's involved in all kinds of organizations throughout this city and community. And finally, I think Patrick has shown a clear understanding how to get things done. He doesn't toot his own horn a lot, but I will tell you that he has been in Lansing multiple times. Patrick is the reason that the state now has an opioid recovery grant program of approximately $1.2 million, and Blue Water Recovery Outreach was one of the first recipients of that grant because of his ability to work with legislators at all levels and get things done. I think he would do a phenomenal job on council. Thank you.
Thank you. We are checking the chat box here to see. Lisa Beeden. One. My facilitator is working through it. Just a moment. There she is, Lisa Beeden.
Good evening, Council Mayor. This is Lisa Beeden. I'm at 2877 Military Street in Port Huron. You also received a letter from me and my support for Pat Patterson. And just to echo what Shane sentiments were, I also know Patrick, actually through a volunteer organization is where I got to know him. I think that he would represent a segment of the population that maybe we aren't currently representing. I think he'd be a great asset to city council and definitely worth considering for this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. If there's anyone else who wants to raise their hand, they need to do so at this moment. If not, I'm going to close down the public comment, so we'll give it just a moment. That's for the people that are also on the phone, as well as on the computer possibly. Okay, I don't see anybody else, so we are going to move on to the actual meeting of the candidates. Just so everyone knows, each candidate will have up to four minutes to address the council. I will announce each candidate's name. They're going to be in alphabetical order. For candidates that are accessing via computer or the smartphone, please use the raise your hand icon when you're ready to speak, so we can bring you in. And also, just to be, please be patient, as there might be a three to five second delay. I'm not sure that there's anybody on the phone. I think they're all in person, but if you're on the phone, again, it's press star nine and then star six to unmute yourself. At the time you're done with your four minutes, or less, depending on how long you take, I will then ask each council member, each candidate, and we'll go once at a, one at a time, and ask if council has any further questions that they'd like to ask for the candidate themselves. And if that's, once we're done with that, then we will close out you and go on to the next candidate. At the end of hearing all nine candidates, we do have, the council members all have a ballot in front of them, which will be collected by our clerk. And we get the opportunity, because there's nine people, it's going to be kind of hard. We do need to probably pare it down to some finalists. So each council member gets to vote for up to two people, and they vote for their two people. The clerk will tally that. Anyone who gets at least two votes will then be put into a finalist, and then we will have to all vote individually on a ballot for the person that we so desire. So, I will rego over that after we've heard all the candidates. But our first candidate is Charles Anter. So if you are out there, you will be let in, and you want to unmute yourself. Hello.
Charles John Anter, 702 Florida Ave, Port Huron. Madam Mayor, council members, thank you. It's a privilege to be here tonight to be considered for this open city council seat. Let me tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a master electrician. I'm a third-generation Port Huron resident. My family has owned bars and restaurants and other small businesses in the city for generations, which I think gives me the perspective of looking at things from the business owner to the employee to the taxpayer. My work as an electrician has ranged from wiring houses in the city to working with teams from around the world setting up the North American International Auto Show in Detroit. So, as a tradesman, I understand the needs of the city. I'm even-handed, thoughtful, I come prepared, and I keep my commitments. That's why I believe I can play an important role in the Port Huron City Council. I bring no personal agenda. I believe in a strong police and fire department. I support our first responders, our teachers, our public health workers, especially now with the pandemic going on. In fact, just recently, I was part of a team that set up a drive-through vaccination clinic at the TCF Center in Detroit, and before that, the temporary COVID hospital. So, working on projects like that, you understand the needs of a city. I think I can effectively represent the taxpayers, and I would like to work with this team to help make the important decisions the council has to make, from tourism to downtown development, building a new fire station, parks and rec. There's just so many decisions. And if chosen, I can promise that I will work hard for the people and for the city. And it would be an honor to be part of the city council, and I hope that you select me. So, thank you, and thanks for listening.
Thank you very much, Charles. Does council have any questions? Give it a second here, so I make sure I don't miss anybody. If I could just ask you, perhaps myself, you obviously applied for this vacancy. Had the thought been there before to run for city council?
Yes, the thought had been there. And then, when the seat opened up, it's like, oh, the time just seemed right. I have the time and the energy to do it. So, I figured I'd throw my hat in the ring.
Okay. Does anybody have a question, then? I know we all got an opportunity to read your resume. So, okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to Joseph Hayes. Joseph Hayes, are you on? Just a moment.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, thank you for your time today.
Okay.
I'm very happy to be considered for this role. This is something I actually considered when I was the sports editor at the Times Herald, but I was told by my job that I couldn't do so. So I didn't put my name on the ballot that year. But this is something that has always kind of been on my heart the last four or five years, because Port Huron really has become a special place to me and my family. After me and my wife located out here in 2006, it seems like from that point on until now, I've always had some sort of leadership position, whether it was mentoring youth, or leading the Times Herald Sports Department, or having my own radio show. But I always, just because of my past and growing up in Detroit, I always saw Port Huron as being a special place, because it was so different than every other community that me and my wife have actually lived in. Like, we noticed the diversity of people, the diversity of organizations, and one of the main reasons I feel like I should be considered is because I've developed a wide range of relationships with people and organizations over these past 15 years. And I know that I can add something to it in a different perspective. Like, one of the main reasons I can be trusted is because I honor God in my life, and I don't want to disappoint Him first and foremost. So, that has led me to have a certain standard, where I want to be treated and treat people the way that He actually endeavors for me to work. So, one of the main reasons why I think that I can add to this leadership team is because I already know that there is strong leadership in this community. I believe that I can bring a different perspective possibly. And just like I said in my letter, being an outsider and being from somewhere else really has caused me to really consider this as a special community and look at things possibly from a different perspective. So I thank you guys for your time. I understand that you might have some questions for me, and I am more than willing to answer.
Thank you so much. I will open it up to the council. Do you have any questions for Joseph? I don't hear any. You know, we've all had the opportunity to read everybody's resume and do our own little research in the background before now, so apparently, we don't have any further questions. But thank you so much for participating, and we will move on to the next candidate. The next candidate is Jason Heelick. If you're on there, then if you go ahead. I see you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you too, so.
Great, thanks, Mayor. Councilmembers, I really appreciate the honor tonight to speak with you guys, even though it is virtually, to throw my hat in the ring for this appointment. And I would be remiss to not give a congratulations to Lisa Beeden on her successful win as county commissioner in her two years on the board. So my name's Jason Heelick. I live at 3554 Shenandoah. I purchased my home there two years ago from the original owner. He was there for 50 years, and I purchased it basically because my grandmother is 90 years old and was no longer able to live on her own anymore. So, the best thing for the family was, I bought in the city. I love the city, and now she lives with me. And every time I get to go home, I get to have a history lesson of the city when we drive around and such. So, since I bought the home, I've gotten to meet all the neighbors, and they are constantly wondering about my projects. I always have one, check one off, add two more. So, this time, I couldn't be any happier with where I am. And a little bit further on me, I grew up in K-PAC, graduated in 2004, and I started at McLaren Port Huron when I was 18. And I also obtained my EMT license, and I've been working for TriHospital EMS for 16 years. So, this is now my 16th year working for Tri. I've forged a very close relationship with many police officers, firefighters, and hospital staff at both of our hospitals in the city. In addition to working in the ambulance, I'm also an emergency dispatcher, so may not see me on the street, but I'm also in the background on the radio directing crews and trying to be that calming voice for them. In addition to being EMT, I am also a full-time realtor. I obtained my license in 2018 and joined a brokerage in Birmingham, Shane Park Realtors. So, my business spans lately at six different counties in southeast Michigan, significantly in St. Clair County and in the Port Huron area. When I joined real estate, I was put into several committees, local, state, and at the national level. I have attended conferences and meetings in Lansing and in DC at the Capitol, meeting with our legislators to speak on private property rights, flood insurance, and diversity. Last year in 2020, I chaired our Government Relations Committee, and we were tasked with doing over 170 hours of Zoom interviews of candidates and incumbents, including Shane Hernandez, who just spoke earlier when he was running for his congressional seat. So, in all of my experience of doing those interviews and speaking with all the candidates and the incumbents, realizing that issues that can be resolved are started at the local government level. And that is why I am now here throwing my hat in the ring. I originally had thought about this a year ago, and then COVID hit, and everything kind of changed for everybody, as we all notice right now. When I came home from work, I was kind of self-isolating, didn't know where real estate was going to go, was focusing on all of that. You know, it was kind of hard to do a campaign if you can't knock on doors and handshake hands and talk with people. So I just felt that it was better to get through COVID, didn't think it'd be this long. But here we are, and we're all learning to grapple and change as the times hit us. In addition to being on the Diversity Committee with Real Estate at the national level, I've also done Consumer Communications. And then this year, I'm representing diversity again at the national level. I did speak three months ago, virtually, I was one of three panelists, to speak on diversity at the national level, and it gave me a great perspective on how we've moved in this country and how we have so much further to go. I think combining my real estate and my EMT medical first responder service for 15 years has allowed me to protect the citizens of the city. And if I were to be put on the council, I could provide even further assistance and a voice to the city residents. So, I thank you for giving me four minutes, and I am open to any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I was just going to tell you, your four minutes were up, so perhaps you're, perhaps you're timing yourself.
I was timing it as well.
Okay. Is there anyone that has any questions for Jason? Okay. Well, thank you, Jason, very much.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. The next person we have is Anthony Lindsey. Is he out there? Did he get reached? I'm still waiting to see. Do we have Anthony Lindsey? Were all the candidates reached? If I could ask the city clerk that.
We did attempt to contact Anthony Lindsey multiple times by phone, and we actually did send some emails, but we did not receive any response back.
Okay. He indicated at the beginning that he would not be able to attend, but I thought perhaps he would be this way. So, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next person, Tim McCullough. I think he's coming up right now. Okay, I see his name at the bottom. You just need to unmute. Okay, Tim.
You'd think I'd have it down by now.
I know.
I feel like I've been doing Zooms for like the last year of my life. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for allowing me this chance to apply for the open position. A lot of you already know me, because I've been in and around the community for several years. I was on city council, wow, it's hard to say, but about a decade ago. And so, when you start putting it into terms, you're like, man, it was a while ago. I've been serving on the school board for the last 10 years or so, had a little stint where I was off for a couple of years. That's what happens in elections and politics. Sometimes you win, and sometimes you don't. As far as my interest in joining the city council, I do enjoy city government quite a bit. I enjoy a community first and foremost. I should say that right off the bat. I love working with the members of our community. I love actually hearing all these stories of the candidates before me. I can't wait to hear the ones after me, because we really have a good collection of people within our community to serve. So that's what makes this really intriguing to me. After hearing Shane Hernandez and Lisa Beeden, I almost said to myself, I should put my support behind Patrick there, because he sounds like a great individual as well. But that's a great thing to have. It's a great problem. We have many people in this community that are talented, have lots of different interests. But I think the thing that differentiates me from some of the other candidates is that I do have that connection to community. I've served on the school board and city council for over the last decade, have a lot of people that I interact with on a weekly and daily basis. Even with my job, I do a lot of interactions with people from Port Huron. I try to speak and be their voice. I try not to be confrontational. I don't know if that's helped me over the last couple of months, as I've been in the middle of school board, trying to keep the schools open or shut, and everything else in between. So that has been hard, so to speak. But I think what I bring to the table is just that connection to community and my love for Port Huron. I really love the city. I can see a lot of potential. I know when I say that, I really, I remember back when I was serving alongside Mayor Kutcher, and he got out, I think it might have been you even, Mayor Rep, that brought out some pom poms for us, and they said, I'm the city's cheerleader. I don't think I've ever lost my pom poms. I feel I still have my pom poms, and I'm cheering on the city, whether it's in the school arena or if it's in the city arena. I really love city government. That's where I've worked for most of my career. I'm currently at Coney Woods, but previously to that, I've worked in city government. I really enjoy the workings of local government. But beyond that, I just, I just am excited to see what's going to happen tonight. I really appreciate the opportunity. And I don't know, I think I've talked long enough, and you guys all know who I am, and I could probably fill another four minutes beyond that. I was going to say, can I take Anthony's time as well? But I won't do that to you guys, won't bore you. But if you have any questions or concerns, I just want to thank you for this opportunity, and I'll be around. If it's not tonight, it might be in a few years. It's just what it is. I love this community.
Thank you, Tim. Does anybody have any questions for Tim? I hate to tell you this, Tim, but it was more than a decade ago. But, but, but thank you. Thank you very much for putting your name in the hat, and we will move on to the next one. Thank you. Next candidate is DJ Palm. I see. Just unmute yourself, DJ, and we'll be all set. Okay, DJ?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can. So just go ahead.
Thank you so much for your time this evening. I know it's valuable. I'll try not to take too much of it. I applied for this council seat for a lot of reasons, but one, I just want to cut to the chase, because in four minutes, it's hard to figure out where to start and where to finish. So, I would say, number one, Mayor Rep, I need your help. I would say the biggest issue, veteran suicide-wise nationally, that we can localize is, I think, the problems we have with the 22-a-day bracelets being sold in the push-up videos, is because we've got a lot of vets taking 22 pills a day. I mean, we are taking pills on a daily basis, and I really don't think that that's good for brain activity. And with some legislation, these pills can be court-mandated to take. Skipping to that, I guess, knowing a little bit about me personally, I think is the problem, is what a lot of people don't know about me in Port Huron. But for a quick little window, I've got no wife and no children, so I've got a lot of time on my hands. And I want to contribute a lot of time and some effort to this open position. So, locally, I know you guys are all new to the marijuana trade. It's something that I've seen on the sidewalk from the underground, so to speak. And I guess the one problem that we, you know, that has just kind of been not whispered, or it's been whispered, is the civil asset forfeitures, because House Bill 4158, there's nothing in the legislative language that protects the owners and operators that we are about to employ the city, because the forfeiture ceiling on that House bill is only $50,000. And I want to know if, once your owners and growers are starting to go in to make more than that, certainly into 2022, is there anything you guys are going to be able to do to make sure that they're protected by the law if they happen to make a mistake when failing a compliance check with the state police or the county sheriffs, or any things of that nature? I just want to make sure that if, you know, assets are being seized, then charges are going to be executed and not dropped. That's mainly the biggest two things I have, is the civil asset forfeitures and veteran suicide. Other than that, you know, I'm kind of just a hometown kid who are looking for ways to contribute. And I'm a college student. I studied media for seven years, and if there's anything that I don't like about the politics, it's media. And I kind of want to be the guy that, you know, can know when a reporter is trying to angle you into a question, or into an answer, so to speak. So, other than that, I wouldn't mind feeling any questions for the last 40 seconds. I'd like to give you time back to you.
Thank you, DJ. Is there anyone on council that has any questions for DJ? I guess not. We've obviously read your resume that you sent to us, and we appreciate you turning one in, and thank you for your time. And then we'll move on to the next candidate. Okay? Thank you. The next candidate is Patrick Patterson. Just need to unmute yourself. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having all of us here, and I apologize if my internet's a little laggy. It's high speed. I'm not sure. Sometimes it is. I'm at.
Can hear you. Go ahead.
I'm at 1202 18th Street in Port Huron. Again, my name's Patrick Patterson. I'm the Executive Director of the Blue Water Recovery and Outreach Center. I also serve on the Board of Directors at the East Shore Leadership Academy, K-8 School, as well as many other community collaboratives and coalitions. But most of all, I'm a proud resident of the city of Port Huron. It's a privilege and honor to be before you today. I come at this with tremendous gratitude and humility to be of service to our community. I'm not here to tell you how great I think I am. Port Huron is already a city with great leaders and passionate people who care and give their heart and soul to making it a better place. And like you, I'm honored to play a small role in that. The truth is, I shouldn't even be here. I've overcome a terrible addiction, which has and is destroying our neighborhoods and families from Port Huron to Los Angeles. I know what it's like to fail and be at rock bottom, and I know what it's like to overcome to be a community leader, as my story was featured in a And I know what it's like to overcome to be a community leader as my story was featured in a documentary played at Sperry's. Having earned the respect of the people and its leaders, my agenda is pure. To serve and represent this city, not just those in recovery. In a world of division, my record is about bringing people together in unity. And yes, I represent a large population of this area. And what I have to offer is an intellectual capital with an understanding of a part of the city's heartbeat and a pulse of our streets. Our people need purpose. Our people need community. Our people need hope. Our country needs hope. And I think I can help with the vibrance of the city and serve our community appropriately, with dignity and honor, and with you. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Pat. Is there anyone that has any questions for Pat? I guess I asked this before of someone else and other people have brought it up on their own. But did you have an intent to, to run that you, you know, the fact that this opening came up? Was that the, was that the only reason that you applied or had you thought about it prior to now?
I absolutely, like, like all the other, the other candidates, I had thought about it before. But now I wasn't in a position, as I am today, to be a candidate and I hope to serve. And I'm honored to be here. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And we will move on to the next candidate. The next candidate is Domingo Ruiz. Okay, just need to unmute. You're on.
Good evening. I'm sitting here, Mayor and Council, and thinking about the four minutes that we often gave to people when they came before council and I, during the eight or nine years that I was on council. And at times, sometimes those things were anguishing because they were there to tell us a few things that we weren't doing correctly. And then other times, they were starting, they were bringing forth some problems that they thought we needed to pay attention to, and we did. And I think during that time, we spent more time doing some positive things for our community. And that's why I'm back in terms of looking at the opportunity to serve another couple of years. Obviously, I have the time. I don't have enough time to spend with grandparents and children because of the COVID pandemic and such. But I'd like to, I'd like to continue because I think we're on a positive path. And I'd like to think in the past 15 or so years, there've been a lot of good things accomplished. I know that one of the candidates talked about a history in terms of the community and such. And I think it reminded me of the time I gave a ride to my daughter and took her around the town. And, you know, she spent most of her time at 2430 Riverside Drive where we reside now. But I told her that there's a, there's a, there's more to Port Huron than Riverside Drive. Well, we did a lot of good things that are, it brought back some memories in terms of knowing that on the south side of the river, there were four different communities, four different houses that I lived in. Unfortunately, two have been demolished during the time, during my time. And I have two that I resided in, in the, the north end. It was interesting to note and explain to her how I knew this city quite well. Maybe it's my age that allows me to do that, but I can think back of, of using Memorial Field as a playground when I lived on Faren Street. I also can think back of the leadership that I was exposed to by my folks who helped with the establishment of the Mexican mission, Lady Guadalupe down in the south end on Golden Street. That taught me an awful lot, what a great number of good Hispanic families that gathered together to establish a place where they could express their faith. And from there, obviously, there's been a lot of good opportunities for a number of people in Port Huron. I think I've contributed to Port Huron. If you looked at her resume, I think I'm very, very proud of all of the things that I've done. But you can see nine years on council. Probably was the most notable in terms of giving back to the community. I was told by my, one of my first bosses that said, give back to the community. You've gotten your first job here. And I was at Washington Intermediate School, which is closed. And yes, the base salary of $7,800 back then wasn't much, but it was an awful lot to a first year teacher. I've been, as I looked at it today, when I put a few notes together, that I've been in 10 different buildings, either as a teacher or as an administrator, not all in the city. There are about five that were in the city. Proud of every one of them. But it also taught me that I knew the community outside of Port Huron. And that came in handy as a council member because what we've learned over the past 15, 20 years, we are not alone. We are the county seat, but we're part of this county. And the coordination and the communication we have between the council and the county in general has really paid off and is a positive move. Those are the kinds of things I serve as example that I think I'd like to see established further on and continue. Things are going well for Port Huron, but let's face it, this is a challenge we will not see, I hope, ever, ever again. Again, I thank you. Take a look at the resume, those, all those agencies that I worked with and, and helped. SC4 being one of them and sitting in on the board for, I was lucky to serve in as a trustee at one time. We have a lot of positive things. The community college itself is an educational jewel. And we've had good communication with them in a lot of different ways. Every building that I was in, I met a lot of good people in our St. Clair County. So you hear me speaking as a potential city councilman again, but I speak this in terms of the big picture. The county serves where we're in this together. And I think that's the positive tone that I'd like to keep going, as you are already doing. I monitor, I watch. And I think you all are doing a good job. I'd like to be part of that once again, if you'll allow me that to happen. So thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? I think most of us know you certainly have read your resume and several of us have actually worked beside you. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will move on to the next candidate. The next candidate is Laurie's and the last candidate is Laurie Sample-Win. Just need to unmute. Can you do that? I can see you on there, but you are muted, Laurie. Laurie, you need to unmute your mic. We can't do it from this end. I can see her on there. I just, I see the name. I see the, the icon, but she's obviously muted. I'll wait for a moment to see. I don't think we can unmute on our end, can we? And I don't know if we have to, I guess I'd ask the city clerk who's on here if she has a contact number to call and ask her to unmute. If not, we'll have to just forego it. But I can tell she's on there.
I do have a contact number, so I will attempt calling her right now. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Everybody just be patient for a moment. I hate to cut her off if she's there and just unable to unmute. But if we can't do it in the next minute or two, we will have to move on.
Here's her phone number right here. Yeah, I think they're going to take.
Councilmember Lamb, you, yeah, you are. Okay. Oh, here we go. I've got her. Laurie, Laurie?
Computers are not my thing, obviously. Can you hear me? I am so sorry. I lost the whole meeting on my computer. I had to reopen it on a different device. Oh, my goodness. Like, I wasn't shaky enough to begin with.
No need to apologize. This is our first.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. You're on.
My name is Laurie Sample-Win. I have been married to my husband for 37 years. I have three adult sons. And luckily, I have three grandchildren who live close by me here in Port Huron. So I'm very lucky. I've been a nurse for 37 years. I also served on city council. I've served on city council from 1998 to 2003. And then again, from 2005 to 2007. So I have Tim beat. I was privileged to be mayor from 1999 to 2001. So I was mayor during Y2K, which turned out to be not much. And I was mayor on 9/11/2001, which we all know was a horrible day. But working with the city council, the county commit, or the, the city manager and the departments, we were able to support everyone through that horrible time. In 2009, I was elected to be on the Charter Revision Committee for the city of Port Huron. I served with Pauline and other members of the community. We worked hard to, we went through the entire city charter. We updated where the mayors elected, where previously we were appointed, mayors were appointed. We also increased the city council terms to four years staggered so that our council members could spend more time serving as a council and less time running for office. Those were the most important things that we did that time. I was, my sister and I were co-founders of First Night Port Huron. That we founded that in 2000. I served as the president of that organization for 10 years. We put on a New Year's Eve celebration for the entire community. After I left public service, I went back to school, finished my bachelor's in science and nursing and continued on, got more credits and became board certified in holistic nursing. I currently serve as a night shift administrator at the hospital that I've worked in for 26 years in Detroit. My job includes using my clinical skills and administrative skills to make sure that we have everything that we need. I currently serve as president of the Board of Directors of the ARC of St. Clair County. That, or that organization is extremely important to me. My grandmother was one of the founding members of the ARC. This important organization provides advocacy and guardianship services for developmentally disabled children and adults in St. Clair County. We have currently been struggling financially. We are working to ensure that we can continue to provide these services. So we are looking for other ways to do that. I can't imagine how difficult it's been for businesses during this pandemic. I've seen and done everything I can to support our businesses, takeouts a couple of times a week. That's, but this pandemic has affected all of us. The entire world is facing challenges. And the city council, I think we have an opportunity to set an example by wearing our masks whenever we're out of our houses and to ensure that all of our businesses are following the health department guidelines related to masking and social distancing. That is very important to me right now. As a nurse, I have seen untold people sick and death that I've never seen in my entire career. So this disease is going to be with us for a while now. The most important thing that we can do, we can advocate for, and I think work with the health department here in St. Clair County is to make sure we could get everyone vaccinated. And so I would like to work with the health department, I think, as a city council member. That would give me a unique voice to talk to people about the importance of vaccination and to alleviate some concerns about these new, new vaccines and how they work. I'm very interested in serving on city council again. I have a passion for serving others. I love this work.
Your phone number?
Okay. Thank you. I am so sorry about my computer problem.
Oh, no problems, no problems. Is there anybody in the, from the city council that would like to ask Laurie any questions? Okay, thank you very much. That will conclude all the candidates. And I just want to say, before we get on to the business at hand, that all the candidates, you know, having nine candidates is, we're very fortunate because we don't get that many people when they have an open seat to run for council. So it's, the fact that nine people came forward to put their names in for this, they are to be congratulated. Whether they are the ultimate chosen person or not, I would like to thank them for, for taking their time to apply. And certainly as well, encourage them that this is no reflection upon them personally, if they, if they do not make it. And they definitely should get out there and run for the next council race, which actually is only filing deadlines, probably about 17 months away, which is less than a year and a half. Because we're already into part of this term. And obviously, this term would be just to fill the, the rest of Lisa's term. So it would not be a four-year term. It would only be a little better than a year and a half term is what it would be. So I would encourage everyone to, to go out there and, and run for office the next time or involve themselves in, on a board or commission. So that being said, each council member has a ballot in front of them. Take a couple of minutes and you can vote for two people. And we're going to, this way, at least narrow down the field. And no one will stay in if they don't get at least two votes. So if anybody getting two or more votes, we'll then move on to another balloting. So at this time of the council, please do that. And then we have a member of the city clerk's office who will come around. And all of us are, are for our first Zoom meeting are here in the building, but we're not together, just for the record. So we're all in different rooms. So I, we will have those collected and then the clerk will tally them up and give us the result.
Mayor and city council, I do have the results from the first round of voting. And I only do have one individual who did receive six votes. And that candidate is going to be Domingo Ruiz. Everyone else just received one vote.
So nobody else got two votes?
Correct.
And we had to have at least two votes in order to be considered as the final? So I guess that we do not need to re-vote at this point. Am I correct?
Correct.
So what we need is from council, if someone would make that motion to appoint, I would appreciate it. And then we need a second.
Mayor, Mayor Rep, I'll make that motion. Support the motion.
Who made the motion? I'm sorry.
Archibald and Ashford support.
Okay, I got it. You both kind of talk at this, it kind of went well, listen. No problem.
She just beat me to the buzzer. I'll get you, Mayor Potem.
Okay, then if the clerk would please. Okay, then if the clerk would please take the roll call.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Mojorak?
Yes.
Councilmember Pemberton?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. That concludes our interview process and our appointing of a new city council member. I would like to say congratulations to Rico Ruiz and I don't know if he's still on the line here. If he is, perhaps we could let him back in again. Let me see if he's still on there. While we're waiting, I do again want to reiterate to anybody else who's out there and to the other candidates. Thank you so much for participating. Uh here he is, so. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It is a privilege once again and I appreciate your support in that regard and I look forward to meeting with you. Thank you. Thank you.
We will, you need to get in touch with the, or the city clerk will get in touch with you as far as swearing you in prior to the next council meeting, which is next Monday. But you will be doing the council meeting by Zoom, but prior to that time, you will have to be sworn in and sign the oath of office, so she will get in touch with you. Okay?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. And does council have anything else to bring before tonight?
Welcome back, Rico.
Well, like I said, I appreciate everybody applying. I think that obviously he got everybody's vote and I would just say from my own perspective, I think during this period of time when we're dealing with the COVID situation, it's important that we have someone who can hit the road right away. He's not been off council that long, certainly knows the financial struggles that we've had. And I do believe that he'd be a great asset to us once again, so I do encourage everyone else to please run, you know, get out there and run for office next year. So thank you very much. And if everybody else is not, does not have anything, then I will, just a moment.
Uh just a bit of housekeeping, oh, sorry about that. I just want to add a bit of housekeeping. A bit of housekeeping, the meeting that we had tonight will be uploaded to the city's YouTube channel tomorrow morning and then beginning at the next council meeting, we will resume live streaming both on Zoom and on YouTube.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim Archibald.
While I agree with you, I think experience speaks volumes for such a shortened term. I do want to say that I think Tim said it best. We had a list of great candidates. All of them very capable. Clearly, if we all voted for two and every one of us picked somebody different, we all thought somebody out there would be a great candidate to serve on city council. I want to say thank you to all of them and to encourage each and every one of them to run when a seat is open again, either by application or through an election. All of them would have served us well.
I agree. Thank you very much. Anybody else have anything else?
Mayor Rep, I'd just like to deal Mayor Pro Tim's comments about the the candidates that were before us tonight because they all did a very fine job in presenting themselves. But I was very impressed with Rico's delivery there. And I'm also had concern about inclusion and diversity at, you know, on our council, so he certainly fits that bill. And it's something we look for, not just as a token, but he has a background, not just his ethnicity, but his love for the entire city of Port Huron and he live, he has, you know, he has, I guess, what do I call it, road keel in north, south, east and west, so I think Rico will come back and continue to do a good job on behalf of the city of Port Huron.
Thank you, councilmember Ashford.
You're welcome.
Did anyone else have anything? Then I need a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
So move.
Meeting adjourned.